Call to order, the February 19th, 2019, meeting of the Lake Mills City Council. Would you please stand for the flag? Whoop, wait. I did, we need roll call, sorry. Misty, just jump in there and start. Okay.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye. I mean, here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritch?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
And Ms. Schmidt previously informed staff that she'd be unavailable this evening.
Right. And now, we'll do the flag pledge. Too many years are doing it the other way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Since I made the mistake right at the beginning, it should be done and taken care of that for the meeting. Okay. Correction and approval of the City Council minutes of February 5th and February 12th.
We're gonna have to do them both separate.
Okay.
I move these minutes of February 5th, 2019.
I'll second.
Good. I got a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Abstain.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Okay. Now, the February 12th minutes. Somebody who is here?
I move adoption of the February 12th minutes as written.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or additions or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll again.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Abstain.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Okay. Moving us on to item five, the correspondence. Somebody like to go with that? No, don't have any? Don't have any? You don't have any? Okay. I have a little. I did have some of the citizens in the city asking about our snow plowing policies, which is why you all got a copy of the memo that Steve prepared. And I have asked Steve to forward that memo to the residents that had talked to me about it. So, we, you know, we may see that again in the future. But, right now, we're going to first inform the citizens that had questions about the policy. So, I believe, I have to double check, but I think that's available on the website. I forgot to check, I was going to. But if it isn't, it probably will be in the near future, so. That was the only thing I had, was people questioning how we do things there. I did get some feedback that people thought the meeting was good Tuesday, the last, the one with the South Main Street, and a little bit of Mulberry Street, although it wasn't meant to be a Mulberry Street meeting. And on Mulberry Street, there has been a lot of activity with the utilities working, trying to get things set to go there. Anybody been on South Main to see what's, is there any activity on South Main yet?
Not really, not much.
Okay. So, they haven't done it. So, Mulberry's actually a little more active right now. So, we'll take that as it comes. That moves us to, okay, item number six, question and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So, I see staff, I see newspaper, and I see more staff. Yay! So, I don't see any public. So, due to the lack of public, we will not have public comment. But, please remember that you are welcome to come and speak to the council at any of our meetings. But as it says in the thing I just read, that if you want to say something about something that's not on the agenda, come a little early to tell the clerk what it is you want to say before the meeting. So, otherwise, we won't be able to let you speak on items not on the agenda. So, well, with that, we'll move on to City Manager's report. And the City Manager's not here, but do you have anything in addition to add?
No, I do not have anything to add.
Okay. So, Betsy will be filling in for Steve, who's out of the office and out of the building today. And we'll go on. Item eight, acceptance of minutes of the Library Board, November 19th, 2018. They will, are accepted and placed on file. Taking us to item nine, council business, miscellaneous licenses. Do you want to read those for us, Misty?
We have three tavern operators, license applications, Tanya Toth, Morgan Clark Sanchez, and Sean Higgins.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council on these?
I move approval of Tanya Toth, Morgan Clark Sanchez, and Sean Higgins.
I'll second it.
We have a second, a motion and a second. So, call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. And item B, discussion decision on authorizing the Police Department to start a canine program. And, ta-da, 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 ta-da. I will turn it over to our police chief.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mick Salk. I'm the Chief of Police for the City of Lake Mills. Basically, I want to come here and talk to you about the canine program. As you may or may not know, I've been a member of the department for 25 years, and I've seen a lot of things during that time. And when I was working on becoming the police chief, one of the questions I had to ask myself was what was the biggest problem facing the community? And my belief is that that is drugs. I've seen the devastation of families who've lost a loved one to a heroin overdose. The TV portrayal of heroin users as junkies is misleading. Each person is a son, a daughter, a brother, a sister, a niece or nephew, father, a mother. And what the TV doesn't tell you is that most heroin addiction starts with legally prescribed drugs. I have personally been to every death scene related to heroin in our city. My officers have responded to dozens of near-death overdoses. I've had to tell family members that their son is dead, their brother is dead. It is a horrible thing to have to do. My job as chief is to protect the people, even from themselves. The officers make the drug arrests, we turn them over to the Drug Task Force, who turn a simple possession case potentially into a dealer case. And we have gone on this way since I started in 1994. But I've seen too many death scenes, and our current efforts are good, but I know that there's going to be more. So, I decided something needed to change. I've consulted with my officers and staff, I've consulted with other police agencies on this, and it is agreed across the board that a canine is a very great tool in the battle in the drug world. Users and dealers come up with more inventive ways of hiding drugs. One of our officers recently went to a drug interdiction school, and the instructor hid drugs in multiple vehicles, and many very seasoned officers were not able to locate them. But what I can tell you is that a canine will find him, because his nose knows. I like that. I don't pretend that a canine is going to solve all of our drug problems. We are still going to have drugs in our community. The potential of an overdose, you know, still exists. I don't know if you recently heard, Mike Kovall, the Chief of Madison, went on the news and announced that he believes there's a particular lethal batch of heroin that's out there right now. I think they had 11 overdoses in a single weekend in Madison. Fort just had a death last Monday. It is still going on, it's still an epidemic, and we also have, and have had for some time, meth moving into the area, and that causes its own set of significant issues. I've noted in my letters to the council about the different aspects of how a canine can assist our officers. We believe that it's going to help supplement our mission to save lives by helping to reduce the drugs in our community. By using the dogs in the schools, we will help to reduce the usage of schools and potential addictions that begin there. And also to supplement our officers' actions on the roads. But a canine also helps to protect his partner. If an officer gets in a tough situation, he's got the dog with, he can release the dog. In situations where maybe there's a burglar inside a building, instead of sending the officers in, we can send a dog in. People tend to surrender when they hear the dog barking, because they don't want to get bit. They're more likely to, they'd rather be tased or sprayed than bit by a canine, so. And then, to be honest, the canine is a great PR tool. I had the good fortune of being up at the Lake Mills Market the other day when Jefferson County brought their canine up there. And as people came through the doors, their faces immediately lit up. Because it was a canine, they were a little reluctant to come forward, but, you know, it was a very friendly dog. Kids were petting it and hugging it. And some of the most touching scenes I've seen in my career occurred there that day, where there was one little boy that walked up to me with a mason jar filled with his allowance money, and he wanted to turn that over so that the canine program in Lake Mills could succeed. You know, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on this. I've had a lot of places contact me and offer donations of multi-thousands of dollars of equipment and cash, and the outpouring from the community's been amazing. I think, I checked our Facebook today, and when I announced that we were looking into the idea of a canine program, that had over 8,000 views. And obviously, we're not that big, so. I think it's something that the community can support. I think it's gonna help with our mission for the Department of the Community to help save lives and to help keep our officers safe. And I'm willing to answer questions you may have about the costs associated with that based on the memos I've provided.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work you've done on this. Before we go any further, we should make a motion, and then we can discuss further after we have a motion.
I'm just gonna read the motion title first, if that's okay.
Okay.
City Council motion 19-2-2-1, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Chief of Police to start a canine program.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to approve motion 19-2-2-1 for the canine program.
I'll second it.
Now, we have a motion and a second on the table, and now we're open for discussion and questions for you, and questions from the council.
So, I read through all your stuff, Mick, and the only thing that I'm looking at that I didn't see covered in here, unless I missed it, which is very possible. You're talking about making use of an older or a squad car that's going out of service and then retrofitting it for... What about plans for the yearly maintenance, the cost for fuel, and stuff like that? That's the only thing I didn't see accounted for in here. Were you thinking that was going to be part of the annual budget of the Police Department? Or were you thinking that's gonna...
Correct. So, yeah, I did, I did make note of it in there, as far as the maintenance. And so, because we are not expanding our department by an officer, it will be a currently existing officer. And so, instead of driving, say Squad Eight, he'll be driving Squad Two. And so, he'll be putting miles on this car instead of this car. So, the mileage will slow down on this car, and it'll pick up on that car, and I think it's gonna kind of offset itself. We take really good care of our equipment, we have it serviced regularly and make sure it all works, because, you know, let's face it, sometimes our lives could be on line, whether or not, you know, the brakes work properly or it turns well, you know. And we tend to sell the cars somewhere in the 50,000 to 60,000 mile range, anyway, so they're not high-mileage cars when we, when we release them for service. So, we are in the process of our changeover right now. The first car that we had stripped down is actually sitting outside under the snowbank that you might have seen, and that would be the car that we're potentially looking at using in that manner. Because it's an, you know, it is about a five-year-old car at this point, you know, there may be some maintenance costs, but because there's only one officer that would be using that, and there'd be less maintenance on the other car, I think it's gonna balance itself out, but I really won't know until we have an opportunity to do it for a while.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Will it cause a problem with your replacement schedule if you bring that car into, back into service?
Basically, we trade out one car a year, and that's, our intention is to continue that, in that route. We'll just have one extra car, so instead of rotating out every fifth year, it'll be a sixth year. I think that the cars that we've been selling have been pretty high-quality cars. They have not been to the point where they're nickel-and-diming us and costing us a lot of extra money. So, I think that that will be a, it'll be okay to make it that extra year.
I have a couple, couple questions. One on the car. I, I understand, you know, that the first year, you're going to have to fit the car for the dog. But then, the next year, you're gonna have to do the same thing with the next car that's coming up, right?
Yeah, we do that every year. So, we rotate out one car per year, we get a brand-new car in. From the old car, all the equipment is moved into the new car. And then, the old car, because of the strip-down, we sell that, and then the brand-new car actually has the old equipment in it from, from that other car. We will upgrade certain things at certain times if there's, you know, radio systems that are getting to the point where they're not usable. We found out this year that Dane County has changed some of its radio frequencies, and our old radios will not line up with that. Because we're in the process, as a city, of setting up some emergency command things where we can operate an EOC, and, and we assume that there will be Dane County responders coming to help us in the event of a tornado strike or an active shooter, we do have their radio frequencies programmed in. Because of some upgrades, we had to upgrade our, our radio, and then every, I don't know, Brandon, if you know, it's every five or six years, our mobile data computers, we replace those, and they're on their own schedule, separate from the cars. But there are upgrades that we do continually have to do, and those are budgeted for in our capital expenditures, and I don't expect that to change.
I guess I'm a little slow on this thing. So, the car that's under the snow right now?
Yep.
Is the car that you're looking at?
Yes.
Setting up for the canine's unit?
Yep.
And that will have some cost?
Yes.
Now, next year, are we getting rid of the car that we're going to upgrade this year? Will that be going out? Or are we keeping that car and getting rid of another car that's coming up behind it?
Well, we, we have some options, and it hasn't really finalized that, but what we could do next year when the brand-new car comes in is transfer all the brand-new equipment from the canine car into that. To some degree, we'll have a cost savings, because our traditional, when we change out a car, it actually involves three different cars to be swapped around, because we, we don't have cages in every one of our cars, and so, there's a kind of a downgrade, a step down. And if we get the brand-new car next year and move all the brand-new canine equipment into that car, we don't have to touch the other cars, and we'll just leave them where they are on the rotation. And then, the rotation continues, but the canine car will be the newest one next year.
Oh, there's, there's a change I didn't have in my thinking.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you're gonna be refitting it every year.
Yeah, but no, they would only have to refit it one year, and then it would go through.
It'd be every six years after next year.
Every year, absolutely. Thank you, Steve, yes.
Yep, they would move it every sixth year.
Yep.
Then, the other question I have is, is the dog only usable when that particular officer is on duty?
Well, we would, you know, utilize that officer on a call-in basis also if there was something going on, and we would schedule him separately, him or her, I should say, separately, for certain events, like if we know we're gonna do a school search or something like that, we would, we would utilize their shift. But the dog is assigned to one person. There is a kind of a pack mentality that's created with, with the canine, and the officer is the alpha, and then the canine is the follower, and they become a team. And generally speaking, you can, and it takes some time, create a second alpha, but you can't have two at once. So, the officer who is assigned to the dog will be its primary handler. The dog will be utilized during its, you know, the handler's shift, subject to call-in for certain instances. If there's something serious going on, if there's a missing child, somebody, you know, somebody with Alzheimer's walked away from their home, there's been a pursuit, and the suspect has run into the woods or something like that, a burglar is cornered in a house, you know, we will make that call and have our canine come in and deal with that.
Okay. Now, all officers get vacation time?
Yes.
All officers get time on and time off?
Yes.
Maybe not enough? But, so, when the officer associated with the dog is not on duty and is on vacation in Hawaii, we're not calling him back to check on something?
Correct.
So, what happens then?
You would call, like you do now, right?
Yes.
With Watertown or with...
Okay.
So, currently, there are seven other dogs in this county.
Okay.
That's not, it's six in this county. We have some overlap, because Whitewater runs into Jefferson County, and Watertown runs into Dodge. But there are three Jefferson County canines that we currently utilize on an on-call basis, so that we do have that backup. Watertown and Fort Atkinson, actually, Watertown is going to a second dog now, Fort Atkinson has one, and then Whitewater. And we've actually utilized the UW Whitewater dog within the past year, and has a bomb dog. So, we do have resources available to us, and the thing is, is that our officer will be training with those guys, and we will develop even a tighter bond, you know, amongst all the canine handlers. And I think that, you know, it's just gonna help us out immensely, and we've already seen them, you know, coming out to the market to assist. So, those resources do exist, and like anything else, like I get to go on vacation, too, and when I'm in Hawaii, you're not gonna have a Chief of Police for here, but you'll have a, you'll have a backup plan, and that's how we operate. We always have a backup.
So, actually, our dog will be one of a pool of dogs in Jefferson County, sort of?
Yes. Yes.
Kind of like the way we do fire, and we do the call-in, the other fire departments?
Absolutely. We've utilized, we've utilized Jefferson County's dogs and Watertown's, and I think Fort Atkinson's for school searches. I know there was one time when, when someone was on vacation or unavailable, and they called in a dog from somewhere in Dane County to assist with a school search. So, there's a big pool that we've become part of.
Excellent.
The other thing is, is that the Sheriff's Department kind of has their own training schedule, and one of our officers has already gone down and attended that and sat through it. And we've been offered, with open arms, to bring a dog to that training. So, that is how we will maintain our training, is with our partners in this county.
Okay.
I have one question. Sounds like, do you have a, one of the officers in mind already for who's going to be picked, or are you asking for volunteers, or what? What's the...
Yeah. So, so what I intend to do is, I'm gonna put up a posting to see who is interested in being the canine handler. There are gonna be certain parameters that, you know, I feel need to be in place. I think second shift is where we have the most activity, the most drug use, being, not that it doesn't happen during day shift. I know, you know, there's several officers that can attest to the fact they've had some very significant arrests on day shift, but, so part of that, there's gonna be some parameters, whoever's interested. There'll be an interview process, and we'll determine it that way. We, we do have, one officer has been extremely gung-ho, he's been contacting kennels, he's been showing up at meetings. He was here at the first meeting that I turned in stuff for, and he's been very helpful, who's definitely interested in it, but right now, I won't commit to that, because I want the feedback and input of my department.
Yeah, that's good. Glad to hear that. We do have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion on this item before we vote?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. So, I saw in here that the canine unit won't be trained to identify any marijuana, any marijuana products. Do you, do you think that would be a problem in, like, school searches or anything like that?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. My, since my first memo, I was able to speak to the canine trainer, and he actually, you know, I'm sure you've heard on the news that the, that the state's looking at legalizing medicinal marijuana. They're gonna decriminalize a lot of, you know, smaller possessions. And my concern was, is that I didn't want false positives. I mean, that is definitely one thing that we in law enforcement are very concerned about, is, is, you know, moving forward on something that turns out not to be illegal. However, after speaking to the canine trainer, he said that they can actually teach them to smell larger quantities, so we could be looking at, you know, teaching them how to smell like an ounce of marijuana or something like that, so that we don't have some of those false positives. But the other thing is, is technically, it is still legal right now. It is federally illegal, and that hasn't changed even with all the states that have legalized it. And so, we've, you know, internally, again, we're gonna discuss what the best method is moving forward, because that was my biggest concern, too, Cooper, was what was gonna be inside the schools. I mean, I, I know I focused a lot of my speech on the heroin and, and the devastation that caused, but we definitely don't want any level of drugs in our schools. So, we're probably gonna look at a dog that has training in that, but is probably gonna not be as interested in small, minor quantities. But we, we're gonna discuss that in-house and with the, with the handlers.
They do pick up the meths?
Yes. My biggest ones are gonna be meth, heroin, cocaine, and we'll be looking at the marijuana situation, deciding how much. What I don't want to do, my concern was, is getting a dog that's gonna service for about nine years and have something get legalized next year, and negate that. But I think the, the canine trainers have told me that they can actually work around that. There's statute, statutes to back up any amount of marijuana. And so, I, we're, I've kind of changed my stance, and I'm glad you brought that up, that we are leaning towards a marijuana dog.
Well, just because you find something, doesn't mean someone needs to get arrested.
Absolutely. And, and, and there will be, you know, there are hemp growers and stuff that have their licenses with them. We actually came across one on the interstate, state trooper found it, actually, it was in the city, right, Brandon? It was in the city, it was a state trooper, got us involved, and they had the licensing, and they had. So, there are now more steps that we have to look through, and we're cognizant of that, and we get retrained anytime the law changes. But it's, right now, it's really changing quickly.
Yes, it is.
Do they have to, does a hemp grower have to take and provide documents if he's in his car or something?
If he's transporting, yes, he does.
If he's transporting, okay.
Don't these substances leave orders behind when you don't actually have the product in the car, but when it was being transported previously?
Yeah, it's, you know, that stuff, like anything else, will seep in, you know, to the fabric of the vehicle. the fabric of the vehicle, people are in there smoking, just like, you know, if you buy a car from a smoker or if you go to a hotel room, it has, you know, there's going to be some residual, you know, and so, you know, false positives do occur. Usually, you know, the person will explain, yes, I've had a passenger who was smoking it in here last week or something like that. And they've been actually very good about understanding why we do what we do and I think they're really happy when they don't get arrested, so.
Well, and that's an important piece because, you know, we all know people that we don't necessarily approve of their behavior, you know, and so...
Can I ask how you would go about doing that? Taking and finding somebody who's, somebody used marijuana in the car, but the person who's driving it later on gets picked up because the lingering odor?
Sure, so, and we've had this before, with or without dogs, we've had this. Basically, what happens is that, you know, the officer lets them know, you know, I can smell some marijuana in the car and, which gives us probable cause to search it. Generally, we get a second officer there, have that person stand out there with them while the car is searched and then if nothing's found, you know, then we have that discussion with them, what is it I smell? What is it that the dog hit on or whatever? And then we usually get that, that sort of backstory and as long as we don't feel that the operator's impaired in any manner, we haven't found any illegal substance, they're free to go on their way.
Time to have your card detailed.
Yeah, and I know, I've heard this through people I know who own towing companies, that they've gotten abandoned vehicles off the side of the interstate and while trying to fix something, found, you know, an ounce of marijuana under the seat or found whatever, so, I mean, people do leave that stuff behind too, so.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
So I guess a little bit of a silly one, but I think it's kind of relevant. So I know that the TSA is starting to introduce more floppy-eared dogs into their programs. Do you know if you'd be going with like a German Shepherd or a typical K-9 unit dog?
Yeah, there's been some discussion about that and I know that the floppy-eared dog has a better public perception, people want to go hug them. And basically, we haven't picked out a breed of dog yet. We still need to go visit some kennels and see what it is that they offer. The dog that was brought out to the Lake Mills Market, he was kind of a cross-breed between German Shepherd, a...
Malinois.
Yeah, pit bull and a Belgian, what?
Belgian Malinois.
Belgian Malinois. And so it had a little bit different look to it, it was a little bit smaller and there's, I guess there's some things usually about the dog's face that lets you know what his intentions are and this was a pretty happy-go-lucky dog. But that has, that has been a consideration. We'll be more concerned about the dog's ability to not only sniff out drugs, but also to be a friendly, friendly dog and that's throughout where we're going, but that is, that is a consideration. Thank you for mentioning that.
But when you say a friendly dog, that doesn't mean a dog that will lick the criminal?
So what was interesting with the K-9 that was at the, was at the market is that, you know, little kids are going up to it and hugging and petting it and stuff like that. And, you know, while there were people there, you know, the handler was telling us how he's chased down people and cornered them and done all this other stuff and what was really neat about it is like, you know, this dog had a personality and it knew which role it was in, what function it was providing. And I think they take the lead off the handler and it's like, you know, here we are, buddy, you know, and it's all happy-go-lucky and then when it gets serious, the dog picks up on that.
Okay.
I was really impressed.
Yeah, makes sense. Lassie, Rin Tin Tin and company.
Right.
Any other comments, questions or...
Whatever you have.
We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. I guess we're ready for a vote. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, you may proceed with your looking for a dog.
Thank you so much, everyone.
And an officer.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah, you said, oh, you said floppy-eared dog? What are you talking about, like a bloodhound?
Usually, they're like golden labs and actually, I believe a German Shepherd can be bought with the floppy ears. I think that's actually a thing that they do at the...
Crop deer.
Some dogs, I think they have the crop deer that causes it to go out, but I'm getting the no from the city attorney that the German Shepherd is naturally, so, there's a learning curve going on here. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, both of you. All right, that takes us to item C, Resolution 1906. Would you read that for us, please, Ms.?
Resolution 19 dash 06, appreciation of anonymous donation to the L.D. Fargo Public Library.
Okay, so you have in front of you the resolution. What is your desire? How do you, will you want to make a motion or accept this?
I'll move to approve Resolution 19 dash 06.
I'll second it.
Okay, now we can have some discussion. I don't know how much discussion we have. Do you know, Betsy, about anything that, you know, background that...
No, no, I do know that the donor wanted to remain anonymous.
Did they place, did they place any restrictions on what the library could use it for?
I know, it went to the library board to discuss what they wanted to use it for.
I guess I'll answer that since I'm on the board. It was a very substantial amount and no, no restrictions that I'm aware of. We've kind of, the board has kind of split the donation in half, kind of put one, put aside and we've authorized Gerard to go out and develop a list of things that we might use it for and he'll come back and he can, they can spend up to $15,000, you know, with the, after he's taken and looked and developed a list of what he wants to do with it and then there's more money that can be used later on. But I sponsored this and I just wanted, I think it's appreciated when somebody's willing to donate to the government and this is a substantial amount.
Is there this consideration of creating some, what is it called when you take part of it and then use...
Trust fund?
Yeah, and then you use the interest? There's not any movement?
That's a possibility, that could be used. We do have a reserve fund that's kind of like that right now.
Could it be?
It's not in a separate fund, is it?
The library's, are you talking about this donation specifically?
Well, there's, I guess, a reserve fund or something like that.
Yeah, yes, there is, there is a fund that...
No, that's not in a trust, is it?
No, no, it is invested, short-term investment and...
That's where this money would go to?
Okay, so it would become part of that?
Doesn't have a lot of strings attached to it.
But not, not the orig, not the $15,000 that you gave Gerard the right to do something with?
We gave him a green light to go ahead and take and start spending some of it.
I'm sure there's a wish list there.
Yes, there is.
I can't imagine any library in the country that doesn't have one, so we'll see what comes from that. We sure appreciate the family that has given this donation as we have appreciated all the ones before. We've had numerous donations over the years and we really appreciate when people remember us when they get to this point in their life, so. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Moving on to item D, this is the second reading for Ordinance 1201. Is there any discussion by council that we need to have at this point or are we just on our merry way through the three readings?
Yes, I haven't heard that there's anything changed with this.
Okay, Dan, have you have any reason?
Nope, the plan remains the same.
Okay, so we move it on to third reading at the...
I just have to read the title first.
Oh, yes, please do that.
Ordinance 1201, amending section 660 dash 44, official zoning map, city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel 2460714, 1843001, Brookstone Meadows.
Sometimes I forget that. Not everybody's got the agenda in front of them like I do, so, although it is published and it is online, so, that will come to third reading at our next meeting, correct? All right, and takes us to item E. Would you read that, please?
Ordinance 1202, amending placement of stop signs.
Okay, so that meets with the qualifications on that one and this is the second reading for that. This is the stop sign at the dance studio that we discussed at length at last meeting. So, anybody have anything to add or ask about on this one before we move on to sending it for third reading at the next meeting? Okay, so that's what we will do. And that brings us to item 10, recommendations for future agendas. Now, we, we had some discussion, but we didn't, we didn't take any action because you can't during a work session, but what about this March 14th meeting at 6:00 on Thursday, March 14th? Do we need to make that an official request? What is, that was the one for the Sandy Beach? Am I right? The Sandy Beach...
Fishing equipment, cleaning?
No, the, what is a boat launch? Well, isn't it the, well, why don't you tell me what we're having that meeting for? That's reverse the thing.
It's the, there's a couple of public information meetings that are being scheduled with regard to Sandy Beach. So I believe the first one is a presentation regarding the, the plan that's kind of been developed to this point and then looking for some public feedback there.
The grant.
The grants are due for application in April, so there's some, we want to get some information out to the public prior to final facilitation of the grant, the application.
So this would be a special meeting, it's on a Thursday night?
I think it's more of a public information meeting. I'm not exactly sure at this point what that looks like, Steve's out of the office, so we can pin that down in the future. We have a little bit of time with regard to that.
Okay, well, we can, should we wait until the next meeting, the first meeting in March for that? I mean, for actually putting it on the calendar or is it, because that's the week after the first meeting, so it's...
Correct.
Okay, is that enough time? Or do we have to do it tonight? Because that's only, that's a week and two days.
I don't know what action you're looking at taking tonight. You're talking about setting a meeting. I believe that the meeting has been set. There's going to be a meeting at that point. What that looks like, do you want to have a council meeting on that specific topic? We had not discussed that to this point. What I've been led to believe is that it was more of a public information meeting.
Would it be here, in this chamber?
The logistics, I'm not sure at this point.
Maybe when Steve gets back, he can let us know how he sees that. Does that sound okay?
Yep.
But at least everybody knows the date. We don't know quite what we're doing that date or where we're doing it, but we're doing something. Is that close enough right now?
Yep.
Okay, we're good on that. And then a date of April 10th, which is a Wednesday at 6:00, is, that's the one on the grant, isn't it?
I believe that's a continuation of, so I believe the goal here is to get as much information as possible in the March 14th meeting and then reaction from the public, discuss that in your first meeting of April as a council and then the April 10th meeting is the week after that meeting, that will be more of a, this is what we're looking at as kind of a semi-final plan with regard to Sandy Beach and then the grant application goes out.
So the 10th is between our two meetings in April?
Correct.
And obvious, well, as you said, this, both of these meetings are public information meetings, both of them?
You know, I'm really not...
I can, I think I can actually answer a little more. I just looked back in my notes. It looks like March 14th is going to be the public involvement meeting to preview and seek public input on Sandy Beach Boat Launch Redevelopment Project. It's scheduled for 6:00 to 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 14th, in the Lake Mills Community Center, so that's downstairs.
Oh, it is downstairs.
That will be the March 14th.
Okay, so it won't be a...
And then we'll look at the boat launch on the April 2nd council agenda. I don't have anything in my notes about April 10th, but I do have the note that it would be, we'd be looking at it April 2nd.
Okay, so...
But we can work that out with Steve too when he gets back, just to make sure.
Right, I'm, you know, I'm not directing you to do it, I'm just saying that I heard this date floating around and that's...
Notice will be provided for the meeting, like every other city meeting.
Yep. Okay, so, any other agenda items or items that you wish to be placed on an agenda in the future? Nothing here, nothing there, nothing, nothing anywhere. Okay, well, meeting adjourned.